The meeting of the Planning Board Borough Somerville for December 11th, 2024 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided and on a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was one, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two, mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier-News, and three, given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember of room.
Here.
Acting Chair Perser Warner.
Here.
And Andrea Dare is excused.
Please stand for the pledge.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Motion to approve minutes from November 13.
So moved.
Second.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Acting Chair Perser Warner.
Abstain. All right. We have a hearing for an application for Route 22 dispensary.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Board professionals, members of the public. My name is Michael Silbert, and I'm an attorney at the law firm DeFrancesco Bateman located in Warren Township, New Jersey. I have the privilege of representing the applicant this evening, Route 22 Dispensary LLC, in connection with an application for final site plan approval. This application concerns property located at Block 92, Block 25.02, more commonly known as 1062 Route 22 East. The property is located in the borough's B5 Highway Business District and is a corner lot. It's located at the intersection of Route 22 and North Gaston Avenue. Before I move on, can I just confirm, I'm chair with Ms. Kozinski, that the applicant served and published a notice of this hearing as required, and that notice is adequate and sufficient for his jurisdiction?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Just for purposes of the application, the final site plan application is a one supporting documents, a two, the notice handed to the application, and P D one will be Mr. Cole's memo dated December 4th, 2024.
Excellent. Thank you. So, as the Board may recall, the applicant received preliminary approval on April 24th, 2024, set forth in the Board's resolution, which was memorialized on June 12th, 2024. Preliminary approval was granted to permit the conversion of the existing one-story building on the property, currently utilized as a Sunoco gas station and convenience store, into a cannabis retail dispensary. The Board preliminarily approved the construction of a second-floor addition over the first floor of the existing building, the removal of the existing canopy, field dispensers, and underground storage tanks servicing the gas station, and the milling and repaving of the existing parking lot for the provision of 20 onsite parking spaces. Just a reminder for the public or the Board, this is not a drive-through facility, and, as I had mentioned, this is an application for final site plan approval. As a reminder, the Board, on its own accord, decided to bifurcate this application and required the applicant return to the Board for final approval once the applicable conditions attached to preliminary approval were satisfactorily addressed, which I believe Mr. Cole would confirm we have indeed addressed those. The proposed exterior and interior improvements at the property are the same now as they were when preliminary approval was granted, with the exception of certain revisions requested by the Board or by Mr. Cole, which I'll have Mr. Stires confirm in a moment. If it's okay, I'm not going to go through the variances and the waivers that were previously granted. There were variances and waivers that were granted at the preliminary approval. Unless, Madam Chair, you want me to go through those?
I don't see a need to go through those.
Okay. All right, great. Nothing has changed, exactly. The applicant previously presented the expert testimony of Mr. Stires, our professional engineer, as to the proposed site plan. We had testimony from Rocco Campanella as to the architectural drawings, and we had professional traffic engineering testimony by Elizabeth Dolan as to the traffic and parking impacts associated with this proposal. Also, the applicant presented operational testimony by Mr. James Barr, the applicant's managing member. There are just a few things I wanted to note before I call our first witness, most of which or all of which were testified at the April 24th hearing. The applicant then respectfully requested, and the Board agreed, to include in its preliminary resolution of approval that the applicant and property owner may continue operating the gas station during the construction of the building and the second-floor addition. So, I respectfully ask Madam Chair and the Board if this provision could also be reflected again in the resolution of approval should we get final site plan approval this evening. The existing driveways and building footprint just said everything is the same, so it will remain in their current locations, will not be altered by this application. I did mention that we had heard expert traffic testimony. Ms. Dolan testified that there was not going to be a substantial increase in vehicular trips as a result of this application, and that a new access permit from the DOT was not required. So, just a reminder to the Board that that was on the record previously. She also testified, and the Board found that the 20 proposed onsite parking spaces would adequately accommodate staff and anticipated interior and curbside pickup customers. And similarly, the Board found that the existing driveway configuration was and remains, well, I assume, remains sufficient to handle the minimal increase in traffic associated with this application. As far as conditions of preliminary approval necessary for this final site plan application to have been deemed complete, we satisfied conditions, and I'm referring to the preliminary approval resolution conditions 2, 4, 7, 9, 12, 13, 14, 15, 21, 26, and 27.
14, 15, 21, and 27?
21, 26, and 27. For example, the proposed shade trees along the southerly property line meet the borough's requirements per Mr. Cole's December 4th, 2024 report. A financial contribution was made to the Environmental Commission in lieu of providing six street trees. The sore lateral was televised, and no repairs are necessary per Mr. Cole's December 4th report. The wall sign was relocated from the east building facade to the south building facade as approved by the Board during preliminary approval. The proposed landscaping, as of the December 4th Cole report, does not adversely impact existing sightlines, and no sore connection fee is necessary in connection with this application. I provided Mr. Cole with the applicant's correspondence with Somerset Raritan Valley Search Authority, but we're still waiting for them to issue a letter to the municipality. We did receive a soil and erosion settlement control permit from the soil conservation district dated August 13th, 2024. That's also been provided to Mr. Cole. Mr. Stires and Mr. Cole are working towards finalizing the engineer's estimate for this matter, and, to my knowledge, there should be no performance guarantee required for this application, as there are no public improvements. But with that being said, the applicant will comply with all bonding requirements as set forth in Section 53 of the MLUL. The applicant reiterates its commitment to comply with all requirements of the CRC and the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act. This includes obligations regarding odor mitigation, air quality, security, identification checks, inventory management, surveillance, et cetera. More importantly, the applicant is scheduled to receive its Class V Cannabis Dispensary License approval at tomorrow's CRC meeting. In my introduction, I want to draw attention to the dual licensing process with the CRC. So, while the applicant is set to obtain the Class V license tomorrow evening, the CRC will not issue its separate permit to operate the dispensary until building is completed and the borough issues a certificate of occupancy. So, I would respectfully ask the Board and the Board Attorney to include a provision in the resolution of approval if one is to be drafted that allows a CO to be issued before the CRC's permit to operate is obtained. It's a kind of a classic chicken or the egg scenario, which comes first. And in this situation, to just ensure a smooth process with the borough's building department, we want to make sure that the CO ultimately is issued prior to the CRC issuing its permit to operate. There are a couple other final points I just want to address before I turn it over to Mr. Stires. Condition number 22 of the preliminary resolution requires the applicant to establish a plan to address any queuing along Route 22 before a CO or temporary CO is issued. So, I've been in contact with Mr. Cole on numerous occasions in an attempt to satisfy this condition. The goal was to satisfy this condition during tonight's final site plan hearing. So, in short, and what Mr. Cole and I discussed, is that as a condition of approval, the applicant consents to allowing local law enforcement, and if necessary, state police to be stationed at the property's entrance, if necessary, to safely direct traffic to and from the property should parking space issues arise. Additionally, the applicant agrees to reimburse the borough for reasonable and actual expenses incurred from local law enforcement, and if necessary, the applicant also agrees to reimburse the borough for any expenses incurred by the borough as it relates to the borough's procurement of state police services, again, if that's required. If this needs to be memorialized in a separate agreement, we're happy to do that. If it would suffice to just be a condition in the resolution of approval, that would certainly be our preference. Another thing I just wanted to mention, the applicant acknowledges receipt of the letter prepared by Mr. Fisher on behalf of the Township of Bridgewater. That letter was dated December 10th, 2024. As a gesture of good faith, the applicant would agree to install additional signage, both inside the lobby of the building, and if the borough of Somerville and the Township of Bridgewater's consent is necessary, we would also agree to install signage along North Gaston Avenue, simply to indicate that the consumption of cannabis on public property is illegal. This builds on our prior agreement to provide no loitering and no onsite consumption signage on the property. So, if that's satisfactory to the Board and to Mr. Fisher, we welcome that to be a condition of approval. That must be satisfied prior to the issuance of a CO. And perhaps most importantly, to the applicant, before I turn it over, I would respectfully request that the Board grant permission, or just put on the record this evening, for the borough's construction department to begin reviewing the applicant's construction drawings prior to the actual memorialization of tonight's approval should one be granted. Ordinarily a signed resolution, to my knowledge, is required for this step. However, since this Board bifurcated the application, to avoid unnecessary delays, it's particularly important to the applicant that this be done. So, if acceptable, I would request that, if the Board could put on the record, or the Board's professionals could put on the record, that they are able to work with the borough's construction department to facilitate the review of the applicant's construction drawings concurrently with the drafting of the resolution of approval. This would allow the process to move forward without waiting for the formal adoption of the resolution, should this be approved. And I just want to be clear, I'm not requesting that the construction department issue building permits prior to the adoption of the resolution of approval. Again, I'm simply requesting that the construction department be permitted, as stated on the record this evening, to begin processing and reviewing the applicant's construction drawings. So, thank you for indulging me for my introduction. I'm going to introduce Mr. Stires to just briefly confirm that the final site plan before the Board this evening reflects the preliminary site plan that the Board approved back in April. So, I'll allow Mr. Stires to get sworn in and put his...
Just two quick questions before we start. You mentioned two documents that you had submitted to Mr. Cole. Were they submitted tonight, or that was part of the application?
I think that they were not submitted as part of the application. They were submitted in terms of meeting preliminary compliance. So, they were submitted with their compliance package, and probably, I believe, digitally, just through email correspondence, but they were not submitted as part of this final application.
Would you mind just utilizing the microphone towards your little... Yeah, because we're utilizing a minute system through AI, and it's much easier if people speak into the microphone. Thank you.
All right. So then, we'll just work as a great part of the compliance package. Does that make sense?
Sure, that's fine.
And you had mentioned a request for the Board that a CO be issued prior to the CRC final operation permit being issued. Can, just for my application and the Board's, can the CRC operation permit be issued on a TCO, or do you need an actual...
So, I spoke to the applicant before this who's been through this before. He indicated that that's not possible, that a CO has to be indicated. If it's possible to put in the CO, that subject to... I know that I'm describing what a TCO is, but no, the short answer is no.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I suggest that we just say that it is required by the licensing, and that's the way it's going to be on the record.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
So, you can't have the cart before the horse. You have to have the building completed and ready to go.
Right.
Before the CRC approves.
Yes.
Right. I think it's largely due in part because the CRC is going to do a site visit, and they're going to inspect to make sure that all the security protocols are in place, and that's really why you need a constructed building and personnel in place to demonstrate to the CRC that you are operating the dispensary in accordance with the law.
Larry, typically, you have to show that all approvals have been satisfied prior to issuance of a CO. In this case, they can't show that until the inspections are done
Correct.
on the final product, and the agency is saying they want a CO. So, it's unusual circumstance.
We actually just finished this same process with the medical center.
Yep.
Exact same process. The state required a finished CO before they could actually open their doors.
Thank you.
Right. Just trying to avoid any issues down the road, so I figured I would address it this evening.
That's the best way to do it.
Right.
Okay. Do you spread the testimony you're about to give this Board as the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do. And, Mr. Stires, if you can, please place your academic background and professional credentials on the record in the field of professional engineering.
I have been before this Board for 30 years now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Stires, you prepared both the preliminary site plan and the final site plan that's before the Board this evening?
Yes.
And I made a number of representations in my introduction. Specifically, I represented that the final site plan depicts exactly what was depicted on the preliminary site plan, with the exception of any changes that was required by the Board or the Board's professionals. Is that accurate?
Yes. Been a number of revision cycles with Mike Cole to account for all of the conditions of approval.
Okay. And is there anything that you wanted to add upon as far as changes made that the Board should be aware of, or did I cover it in my introduction?
You got it pretty good.
All right.
I think the only thing we need is, like Mike putting in his bottom of his letters, to do the engineer's estimate, should it be approved tonight. So, that's the only thing left, unless... That's my understanding at least.
Craig did a nice job on the revisions. They were done per the preliminary approval, so the plan you're looking at. It wasn't discussed, but the waiver for shade trees was eliminated with the trees along the driveway. So, there's actually a waiver was eliminated between preliminary and final. So, he did a nice job, in my opinion.
Thank you. The one thing, Mike, I don't think we're going to get, as usual, from SRVSA, we're not going to get a letter. We're just going to... We have the email.
I'm good with that. I just referenced the letter, so I was just following up on that.
Yeah.
The borough didn't have it, so I didn't know it was in the works, but the letter works. It works.
Yeah, the email has been going pretty good.
So, I don't have any questions for you, unless the Board has questions of Mr. Stires.
Any questions?
The only question I would have is regarding the signage that you talked about. I don't think we have the authority to approve putting signage up on Bridgewater's side of Gaston Ave.
Right. I agree, and that's why we're willing to work in good faith with the Borough Council, if Somerville wants that signage, as well as with the Township of Bridgewater and their Township Committee, if that's something that the Township of Bridgewater wants to entertain. Obviously, if they're not interested, we won't do it, but if it's well-received, we'll work with them to accomplish that.
I guess the question I had, when you're referring to calling in local law enforcement and state police if there is issues, you know, what kind of authority do we have to put anything like that in as a satisfactorian of the mitigation plan? I don't... I've never had that one come before us, so I'm a little hesitant of us overstepping our authority of putting and saying this is what's going to happen.
Yeah. I would say that I think a condition of the resolution of approval can certainly include what I had represented. This is related to traffic, and it's something that a Board can require. Now, I guess the next step would be to work with the Borough Council, but as far as it just being a condition of approval, it's something that this Board certainly has the power to do, and we've already agreed to it, so...
Maybe the way it's worded is something along the lines of, in the event that local or state law enforcement is required, the applicant has agreed to reimburse the borough...
We're fine with that.
I'm more comfortable with something like that, yeah.
Right, but only for...
For traffic.
Yeah, only as it relates to traffic.
Yes. No, for everything. You're not going to agree to that?
So, who... So, my only question with that wording is, who would be requiring the police? Should the verbiage be, if the, you know, local or state police see necessary? Because who makes that determination if there's an issue?
Well, it could be anybody that gets called. It's just we're saying it's in relation to a traffic issue.
Yeah, so I would say...
Right.
Yeah, so if a neighbor or another commercial business along the highway is having problems with their access being blocked because of, you know, backups or, you know, access, whatever the case may be, and they call local law enforcement, and local law enforcement has to go out there and has to deal with traffic, and then they call state, you know, in that circumstance.
So, let me... Let's jump back a little bit. I think the biggest traffic crunch you're going to have is right when you open.
Right.
Yes.
It's that first, you tell me, week, two weeks, probably two weeks, two, three weeks?
I would think grand opening.
And then the novelty wears off.
Right.
So, you know those crunch times. What if the applicant committed that they would hire off-duty, either jobs for blue or an off-duty police officer for those first two weeks as a commitment? So, this way, there's mitigation already present, and we're not reacting, we're proacting.
Yeah, so, we're welcome to just... It's a good idea to plan in advance. If you already know that the grand opening is probably going to have the most traffic to the site, the applicant is more than happy to procure either local law enforcement or security in addition to what's already usually onsite to mitigate any traffic concerns associated with the grand opening. Mayor, you said two weeks?
Well, you tell me. I mean, I think they know best what that impact is on the initial open. You know, the...
What's a good time period? Like, how long do you think a grand opening, one week? Do you think one week is good?
Probably do a soft opening, which will probably...
Yeah, I would be more comfortable with two.
Yeah.
Because I think... And the reality is, if after one week, you know, if it dwindles down, you know, I don't see a problem with eliminating it.
Two weeks and/or until the...
The novelty wears off.
Until the situation is mitigated.
Yeah, until the traffic concerns are mitigated.
The traffic is ultimately, my opinion, the public safety and the active road is the local PD or the state highway, so it's basically their discretion of what needs to be done.
Yeah.
I don't want, just because a neighbor claims that something's happened, that they have to put somebody out there, you know, 12 straight hours every day that they're open, or whatever the hours are, unless the police say, yes, this is substantiated, so...
Yeah, that's why if you have an off-duty officer there for the first two weeks, you're covered.
We're good to do that for the first two weeks, and I think how it would play out is certainly if there was a complaint from a neighbor, I would hope the Borough Council would investigate, and the borough's professionals would investigate it.
We'll let you know.
Right, to determine whether or not this is truly an issue, and then if it is, we'll work with you.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the Board? All right, I'm going to open it up to the public for any comments.
And questions of...
And questions.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board, and this is Chair Warren. My name is Alex Fisher with the law firm Savo Shaw, Corsini, Warner, Gillespie, O'Grannick, and Fisher in Somerville. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Silbert and the applicant for taking some of the concerns in the letter that we had and working with us on that. I just want to first confirm the onsite sign. What did you propose that I would say?
We proposed that it would say, no loitering, and additionally, it would say, no onsite consumption. Or no... But now... Oh, you're saying what we previously said?
Yeah, that what you've agreed to.
Oh, this evening?
This evening, yeah.
This evening, we said that we could put signage in the lobby and along North Gaston Avenue that says something to the effect of public consumption of cannabis is illegal.
Could it reference North Gaston?
It absolutely can.
Okay. And I guess the only other thing we have, and I'm not going to belabor this because I know it's final site plan approval and not preliminary, is would your client be willing to make the same accommodation if there's a traffic issue that spills over into Bridgewater as a result of, I guess, a lack of parking?
When you say accommodation, when you talk about...
That if, just like, if Bridgewater PD is required to come out because, due to a traffic issue caused by the dispensary, by the applicant, then in the same way that they would reimburse the borough of Somerville for its cost or the cost required for the borough of Somerville, please don't call the state police.
I think actually that condition was now replaced with their agreeing to have an off-site, you know, for other traffic.
Off-duty.
Off-duty.
So, I think that's...
Is there any plan for if there's a...
Mr. Fisher, can you use the microphone? Because, again, other people are watching it, and I know we're able to hear you here, but not everybody can.
Is there any plan or accommodation for traffic issues that may arise after those two weeks?
Well, that's why I suggested mitigation should, unless it's a compelling mitigation that succeeds the two weeks, having that statement in there.
Right. And would, as part of that mitigation, the applicant have to reimburse the municipality if there is an issue regarding queuing into Somerville, onto the highway?
We didn't contemplate that. We only contemplated having the off-duty officer. You got me saying off-site officers.
For two weeks?
For two weeks, yeah.
All right. I mean...
Yeah, there's, you know, there's experience, and again, I'm not a pro in this type of... But, you know, I passed by the, I think, one of the first ones in the state to open on Route 1, and it was busy for the first couple few weeks, and then it trailed off, and now, you know, there's no issue. There's no traffic, there's no queuing, there's no... So, it's that initial push, and then it kind of subsides and seeks its own level.
All right. We just asked that if you do come to an agreement with Somerville for reimbursement, that you'd be willing to work with, in good faith, with Bridgewater to do the same?
Yeah, it's something we'll consider to work with Bridgewater. I mean, like I had mentioned the signage already. I can't, you know, we're not going to agree to reimburse Bridgewater or anything to that effect tonight, but we can keep the line of communications open. We don't want to create any problems for Bridgewater, so...
Yeah, it's not a reimbursement of Somerville. It's a direct hire of an off-duty officer.
Okay.
Okay. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment or questions? All right, we'll close public session. Kara, can you go... Go ahead.
I was just going to... Go ahead.
Can you go through where we're at right now?
Yep. So, the application before you is for final site plan approval. The conditions that I have are all conditions that were attached to the preliminary approval and outlined in the resolution will continue, except as maybe otherwise amended tonight or previously satisfied in connection with the final site plan application. The applicant will comply with all bonding requirements, as they testified too. The CO will be permitted to be issued as appropriate. Obviously, they have to comply with all requirements, but prior to the CRC permit to operate. However, all other third-party permits would be required to be satisfied in order for the CO to be issued. Signage, the applicant has agreed to post signage in the lobby and along North Gaston to indicate no public consumption of any product, and that that is illegal, and they would do that prior to CO, and would work with the borough and the Township of Bridgewater as necessary to install and approve the installation of that signage. And they would do that prior to CO and would work with the borough and the township of Bridgewater as necessary, uh, to install and approve the installation of that signage. The applicant has requested, and I think that really all the board can include as a condition, is that they have no objection to the Borough Construction and Building Department beginning the review of the permits. We can't direct them to do anything, but we certainly have no objection to that. Um, and, and make sure I'm getting this correct. Beginning at the grand opening or soft opening, whatever we're going to be calling it, um, the applicant will engage the services of an off-duty police officer for traffic purposes for two weeks from that date to assist with traffic and queuing as necessary.
I think we add it in there and/or until the traffic conditions are mitigated.
Right.
Or traffic concerns, I should, we think we should say.
Okay, which will be determined by.
Why don't we say the chief of police?
Yep.
That's, that really, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, that's where the authority belongs.
And obviously, you know, just for, for the record, if there's any concern at any point, either the borough or the township can reach out and have, you know, law enforcement go over there and, and deal with it. So it's not just during that time period, so it's from that point going forward. Okay, uh, till the chief of police determines.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Alright, you in a motion?
I will move it based on that.
I'll second that.
Mayor, you seconded?
I did.
Yes.
Chris Addicks?
Yes.
Art Aikens?
Yes.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember of room?
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the resolution amended, uh, for conditions for ANA. Uh, this is for, Brian, do you actually want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take this one. So, so this is the, uh, the end of a very long ongoing saga of the, uh, the Parkview Parkland, uh, that fronts Fairview Avenue. And, um, this predates me, uh, and, um, probably a, a year, year and a half ago is when it, it began to, uh, to become a, a bigger issue. So, so the push was, uh, the redevelopment agreement that the borough had, as well as the site plan approval that the planning board had for, uh, the entire project over off of Fairview. Part of that was that the developer would donate and build a, uh, park, uh, on a plot of land. I'll call it a thumb, that, uh, that fronted, uh, Fairview. And, long story short, um, the Environmental Curri- Commission raised an issue, uh, to ensure that the property was clean. Uh, a lot of deep dive was done, a lot of work with the developer was done, a lot of negotiation, uh, amongst the council and the developer, uh, were done. And what it came down to was, uh, they had, I'll call it an NFA, uh, a no further action letter that dated probably about fifteen years ago or so, Colin, twenty? Yeah. However, there still, uh, was a concern because this was going to be parkland. And, uh, and, and that concern was raised by a number of folks, including Larry, uh, and I think rightfully so. And, uh, the concern was, well, let's test it before we take it. So we went through the iterations. The developer said, I have a piece of paper, it says it's clean. The Borough Council took the position, well, you know what? Because it's going to be parkland, we want to make sure. And without that, uh, added extra measure of security, uh, the Borough Council said, we are not, uh, going to take possession of that piece of property. So the council passed a resolution at our last meeting, uh, actually two meetings ago, I think it was. And, uh, and, and we eliminated that as a part of the redevelopment agreement. So once that has been done, it no longer is a component of the site plan approval. So it's now coming to this body to amend the approval, to eliminate that from the, uh, their, their site plan approval. How's that, is that? A good synopsis?
Yep.
I think you did a pretty good job.
Alright.
Much better than I could have, definitely.
Um, and, and the council unanimously, uh, supported this, so, um, and that's, uh, due to the concerns raised by Larry, uh, environmental and the council itself, so. That's it, so I'll make a motion.
Um, I'll second it, but I can't vote on it, so can I second?
Uh, you can second.
Okay.
Um, and I'll just, I'll just reference, uh, just one more thing for the board, that there is a, a bond that was posted that was part of the prior amendment of this condition that the board agreed to. Um, that bond will be, uh, returned, that would have to be in action of the Borough Council, um, subject to any monies that might be owed to the borough. And that's also reflected in here. So we've got, uh, Warner, Sullivan, Adair and Cleveland that can make the motion and vote.
Oh, I can't make the motion?
You were not in the original.
Ah, okay, alright. So, so I withdraw.
I'll make a motion that we adopt this modification as is. Is that sufficient?
Yes, second? We have to do a voice?
Yes.
Could you repeat the members that are eligible?
Warner, uh, Adair and Cleveland, so really just Warner and Cleveland. Sorry, Mayor.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner?
Yes.
Alright. So we did have some items for discussion. The ARB was on for discussion. This is still with, uh, council, so we are going to hold off on any discussion on that. Then we have our ordinances. These are the ones relating to the fence, corner lots, things like that. They are, uh, already have been introduced on the eighteenth, I think it was, of November. So we get our next round of comments. Does anybody have any comments or discussion as it relates to? So no comments, back to council and then they will just proceed.
Okay, do we have to take a motion on that? To send it back to council or no?
Well, we need to make a finding, uh, that's consistent with the master plan if there's any other comments. And just so I don't forget afterwards. No, we do have that Somerville Urban Resolution to do also, so we'll, we'll hit that back afterwards.
So, I, I'll make a motion to make the recommendation to can, to council for the two ordinances, again, in the same form that we sent them up and they, I don't think you guys introduced anything different, correct?
Three.
There's three.
Three, sorry, three.
I meant they are in line with our master plan.
They're consistent with the master plan, correct?
So moved.
Second.
Chris Addicks?
Yes.
Art Aikens?
Yes.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember of room?
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner?
Yes. Alright, you want to loop back to this, uh, Somerville Urban?
Yep, um, so everybody may recall that we had, uh, Somerville Urban renewal, phase three, come before the board, uh, in October. Yeah, I think it was the beginning of October, um, to make some amendments to the buildings one, two and five. This resolution, um, memorializes the, uh, application and memorializes the action of the board. I just have a couple minor comments, uh, changes, which are really just corrections. Page one and throughout the entire document, wherever it references the application number, instead of twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three P, it should be twenty twenty-four. Um, the bottom of page one, the date of that, uh, adoption of the first resolution was on February twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, not February twenty-second. Page three, the date of the CHA completeness letter was August twenty-first, not August second, twenty twenty-four. Um, the bottom of page, and I'm sorry, this is not numbered, bottom of page four, uh, the square footages of, uh, are a little off and the building reference. So the last sentence on page four should read, the restaurant use in building two will be increased by three thousand four hundred and ninety square feet and the retail will be decreased by one thousand, will be increased, I'm sorry, by one thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet. The next page, second paragraph, second sentence, uh, will read, building five will now be amended, will be amended to now contain an open slash cafeteria type food court on the first floor, a resident amenity space on the second floor, a spa on the third floor and a hotel on the fourth and the fifth floors. And I think.
Page nine.
Yep, page nine, condition number eleven, uh, just a typo, it shouldn't be roof top amenities, it should be roof top amenities. Um, so other than that, we're all set. And the members permitted to vote are, everybody here.
So moved.
Second. Chris Addicks?
Yes.
Art Aikens?
Yes.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Barry's the only one that can't vote.
Yeah.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember of room?
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner?
Yes. Alright, so under pending business, first thing is we, uh, have the EV stations, residential and the parking decks. Um, I think that we would like you, Mike, to begin some research on this, to develop maybe some, uh, ordinance guidance for us as it relates to proximity to buildings, parking decks, where they belong, where we don't want them. Um, but I think if you can do some research for us and bring those back to us for some recommendations so that we can get that pushed up.
Will do.
Is, is that in the commercial and residential that we're looking at as, as well?
I think it should be.
Yeah.
My understanding from the fire marshal is yes, it was, it was no distinction made from his office at least.
Alright. Yeah.
It is the same, yeah.
And then we have the review of our, uh, still open the twenty twenty-five RFP for the professionals. Uh, at the next meeting, we will go into executive session and then we will meet and discuss from there, um, so that, and make some guidelines and decisions moving forward, okay? The next one was our, the stormwater ordinance, which is the tree ordinance. This is going to be carried over. You know, this is something that the council is looking at. We're really kind of waiting on them if, if it comes back here, but just to be aware that it is out there and it could come to before us. Go ahead.
Just to let you know that the Environment Commission people are very interested in making a presentation to anyone who will listen. So if we have to have a joint meeting to make it easier and more efficient between the Borough Council and the Planning Board or Board of Adjustment, we would encourage that.
Well, I want, I want to see.
So everybody gets the same message.
With new council, uh, we will gauge the level of interest with the council and see who from the council wants to spearhead this. Uh, and, and request then the council to ask the planning board to look at.
Okay, then we'll.
Follow with the, the proper procedure.
We're waiting to get some sort of marching order.
I want to see who from the council would like to spearhead.
Okay, I'm sure you'll find somebody.
I'm sure, well, maybe, maybe not.
Oh, no, 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 there's plenty people, it's okay, yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Alright, and then last but not least is our twenty twenty-five planning board meeting dates. I went through them, Jason went through them, I don't see any conflicts. So we do have to, uh, take a vote on these.
I'll move the, uh, two thousand twenty-five planning board meeting dates as noted.
Second. Chris Addicks?
Yes.
Art Aikens?
Yes.
Larry Cleveland?
Yes.
Jason Kraska?
Yes.
John Manilio?
Yes.
Barry Van Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher?
Yes.
Councilmember of room?
Yes.
Acting chairperson Warner?
Yes.
Only question, still six o'clock?
Yes, still six o'clock, nothing changes on the time. So my comments, I just wanted to, really quick, it's been a crazy hectic year for us here on the planning board. Had some, uh, very unfortunate happenings throughout the year. I think everyone has conducted themselves professionally, um, and that it is an honor to serve as your chair, as the acting chair in Bernie's place. It was definitely a year that nobody saw coming, so thank you for everybody's support throughout the year as well. I look forward to an amazing twenty-five on the planning board. Whether it's as chair or not, I love being on the planning board, always happy to serve, um, and that is all that I have. Um, I am going to open it up to the public for anything, any comments? Okay, close, we got closing public?
Oops, sorry, jumping the gun. Just a quick note for everybody, um, because different people watch, the reorg meeting for the council is not at the high school this year. It is at the middle school, so just wanted to let people know, in case, you know, a lot of you guys go, so.
Yeah, there was.
Don't go to the wrong place.
There's a conflict at the high school this year.
Wow. Okay, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.